To call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop Meeting for October 23rd. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Anderson.
Here.
Baldwin.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Muncie. Stanton.
Here.
You have a form.
Gregory, let me know that he wouldn't be able to make today's workshop, just so you all know. Are there any agenda changes or deletions? Any guest speakers? I don't believe so. Public comment on agenda items only? I don't see anyone in the room ready to do that, but is there anyone online that would like to make a comment on agenda items only? Online? All right, we'll just go right into the discussion items. This is item 6A. This is the approval for on-premises tasting room permit for Noble Twist Tap House. This is on, I don't even have it pulled up on my computer yet, but go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So Wes Noble is with us this afternoon via Zoom. He and his fellow business partners have been hard at work planning a new brewery and winery and distillery at the old Toulouse Restaurants location at 246 Culver. And so last year, they went through the process of obtaining their special lane use approval from the Planning Commission and their Historic District approval for some exterior improvements that were planned as well. And so a step in this process for them is obviously obtaining their liquor license from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And the city has to actually, you know, indicate that we're fine with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, considering that request. And so that's essentially the request that's before you. We do have a section of our Code of Ordinances that kind of covers alcoholic beverages and some of the requirements. And there's some reasons for denial outlined in Chapter 90. Mr. Nobles provided a letter to you indicating that he does not believe that, you know, any of the reasons for denial are warranted in this case, but he's happy here to answer any questions that you have. And perhaps, Madam Mayor, maybe you could have the opportunity to kind of talk a little bit more about the business that they're proposing.
Yeah, Wes, if you want to unmute yourself, we would love to hear from you a little bit. I know if the council has any questions, but we would love for you to introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about what you're hoping to do.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me well enough?
You bet.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure if, of course, I know Ryan, I'm not sure if I've met the rest of the group yet. But if not, nice to meet you. And looking forward to being part of the community. And so I live, I live in Holland currently. I've been a Michigan resident for about 11 years. And yeah, I've been, we've been hard at work on this project and, and loved Sagatuck and thought it would be, be a great place. And I was lucky to connect with the right people and find the space. And yeah, it's been quite a process. So I would say it's been, it's really been about 15 years in the making, but really in the, in the past, say, four years, we've really been pushing, pushing hard. And yeah, we're, we're to this point and we think that we'd add a nice element of hospitality to the, to the community. And yeah, we want to not only be operate as a brewery, winery, distillery, but have a full kitchen as well. And integral part of the business is, of course, serving, serving patrons on site. So that's the, I guess, I suppose, the nature of, of the request. And I don't know if I, if I summed up well enough for you or not, but without trying to, trying to not ramble too much.
That sounds great, Wes. Does anyone have any questions while we have him on the line? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Mayor Stanton. Mr. Noble, I think we met. Did you do the original presentation at the Historic District Commission and Planning Commission?
I did. I recall that we did meet there. Yeah, nice to see you.
Okay, great, great. So it took, I think, when we met, I think it was originally intended to maybe open your doors this summer, but, or, right? Was the original intent, by the way, as things go, it just, it takes longer. So this is still an intent to operate a microbrewery, right?
Correct.
Then adding the tasting room, would that be inside or is that going to be outside next to the, we're not sure yet?
Oh, well, it's, the tasting room is essentially the restaurant.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm learning, I learned that, that the tasting room permit is a separate license in the process of working with our attorney to apply for licensing. And so you, the way I understand it, you can operate as a microbrewery and not serve the public directly. But, but, but that's not part, that's not our business model. Our business model is to exclusively serve the public. And to do that, you have to have the on-premise tasting room permit, which means that your tasting room is your restaurant and it's in the same premises of where the, of where the product is being manufactured. So they also offer an off-premise tasting room permit, which would be like, for example, the Mitten Brewing Company in Sagatuck, that would be an off-premise tasting room permit.
Okay. So essentially, and again, I'm in support of this, of this proposal. So just to understand with this, that you'll be a microbrewery with a tasting room. So you'll only be serving your products. You won't be doing any, right? Okay. Yeah, so I, I think that's a great idea. I really support this. I think it's a, I remember years ago talking to someone in town who said, when I said, okay, how, how can the town get busier? He said, just put in more bars and restaurants. So this is a bar and restaurant. So I would completely support the idea. But I would think a microbrewery in and of itself is a tasting room by nature, right? Isn't that what people are going there for? But the law's a law and I support this, so thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I mean, I'm looking at, he's got his planning and zoning, Historic District approvals, that I'm excited that there's going to be something in that business. It's been, it's a beautiful building and I'm happy that you guys are seeking to improve it. And I don't see any problems at all with approving this tonight.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other questions?
No, we'll put it to a vote on the, at the next regular.
On Monday.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
And Wes, will you be using the outdoor space then in that patio area?
We will be, yes. And actually, there will be more, it will be seasonal, of course, but there are more seats on the patio area than there are inside.
Fantastic. Nice. It's a beautiful space there.
It really is.
Yeah.
If there is nothing else, anyone else have any questions? Okay, Wes, thank you so much for being here and best of luck. And we will take this up at Monday's City Council meeting for a vote.
Thank you. I'll see you in person on Monday.
Okay, sounds great. All right, then we'll move on to item, discussion item number 6B, the proposed conservation easement for the eastern portion of the old airport property. Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you all likely recall, at your last workshop meeting, you reviewed the, kind of the first draft of a conservation easement to kind of one, familiarize yourself and ask some questions of David Niatrey with the ODC and kind of ask any initial questions that you might have, get a first look at the easement language. And then, you know, provide some feedback for ODC and staff to consider as we continue talking about that. And so as we discussed at the last meeting, ODC had kind of flagged a couple of items that they wanted to kind of maybe rework some language on. Their attorneys did, in fact, do that, kind of sent a draft back to us and myself. And the city's legal counsel took a look and Chris Patterson had some additional red lines to consider. Most of those red lines, the ODC and staff and legal counsel are good to go. There was a couple of them that the ODC flagged as, as having some, you know, having some concerns with, given, you know, where we're at as far as, you know, long-term plans with certain monetary resources, you know, and what's planned for the property going forward. And so perhaps if you're okay with it, Madam Mayor, maybe I would let David just kind of touch on those things and just kind of give you his perspective and on those pieces. And then we can kind of discuss, you know, options for the council going forward.
Okay, go ahead, David, if you wouldn't mind.
Good to be with you folks again. Really appreciate the thoughtfulness which you're going about planning with this easement to have the chance to meet with Ryan again today. And just want to say, city staff on whole have been just doing a great job with, with councils, making sure everyone gets to an outcome that we'd like here. Ryan, can you remind me what, in terms of what draft has the, the city council seen? Just in terms of which, which changes you wanted me to talk through?
Yeah, so the, so the draft that's in your meeting packet today includes all of the agreed-upon language. There's, there's two additional items that are not included in the easement draft, but were noted separately in a memo to them. One related to whether or not there should be some sort of like annual report on the conservation, you know, efforts for that year and any proposed plans for the following years. And then there's a separate kind of red line section that we pointed out to them as it relates to whether or not there should be some sort of, you know, termination option after a cure period if there's concerns that aren't being rectified.
Yeah, perfect. So to discuss kind of our thoughts on those two items. And like I shared with Ryan earlier today, and shown kind of by my presence here, obviously, the ODC is committed to being involved with the city on this property for the long haul. I think I've talked about the cool partnerships already with the school district at that site. In, in our point of view, when it comes to, you know, whether there should be some kind of annual reporting or discussion, we're fine with having ongoing conversation and relationship with the city. We just tend to prefer that that's outside of easement language, just based on the perpetual nature of that. And just thinking as times change, what, what goes into those things. So certainly, I'm willing to come to this meeting, any meetings, to talk about what's happening there. I would encourage, you know, different departments from the city to have meetings to talk about the use of that property. I know council said that there are still long-term plans to be thought of there. What other type of amenities? We'd love to be part of those conversations. But for us, we would prefer to see that type of relationship and agreement outside of the formal easement description language. You know, more importantly to us, I think our concern around the 90-day cure period is, in essence, we feel like that makes it a 90-day easement. And so our, you know, our desire is to keep that property in accordance with our mission in perpetuity. But what we would be, we would hesitate to have in that language would be, you know, for some future cure to be asked for, that we don't have a resource pool to deliver on as a way to kind of circumvent the permanent nature of the easement. So just like we've described in the easement, anything that the ODC is doing on that site in our easement, we're not asking for resources from the city. Those kinds of things to do our, you know, annual checking in, you know, making sure the, the property is, is being cared for. All of that would be on us. But where we don't have, you know, often organizations like a land conservancy would require a large endowment upfront. We're not asking for that from the city, but that means that I don't have a specified funding pool to do ongoing improvements of the nature that are allowed in the easement in terms of trails, boardwalks, you know, addressing a new unknown invasive species and what that type of cost would be. And so from the ODC's perspective and from our board's perspective, we don't want to make a commitment to a level of action that we don't have a funding stream associated with. Obviously, we'd love to be in continual partnership with the city to talk about how we want to use, utilize that property and manage it for the public good. We think those additions in terms of calling out the public use that's mentioned as being acceptable and encouraged, we think that was a great change. But for us, we don't want to have any kind of legal obligation, something to something that we don't have resources set aside to at this point in time. Is that clear, Ryan, from what our discussion was?
Yep.
Yeah.
Happy to, happy to answer any questions after your discussion.
Yeah, does anyone have any questions?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Thanks, Dave, for being here today. So just, it's probably just my own confusion on this. So in terms of the actual conservation easement, which is the point of discussion today, in all honesty, I did not get a chance to look at the red line version because of the late delivery of the packet, so I still have to review that. However, one of your comments in terms of the city's responsibility for maintenance of the entire property, obviously, the part that's not in the conservation easement, not obviously, but the part that's not in the conservation easement still remains the city's responsibility for whatever.
If I'm understanding correctly, yes, our intent, in, in this document, we are not saying the ODC will manage that whole site for the city. Correct?
Yep, and that, that's, that's, yeah. Two is that within the conservation easement itself, will the city and its taxpayers have responsibility for any of the maintenance and upkeep and improvements and some of the things that you mentioned just in passing over the course of the perpetuity of the, of the conservation easement? Is that going to be ODC's financial responsibility? In other words, the city will not be responsible for funding any?
Two, it's a, it's a both and. So what the ODC is agreeing to be responsible for is any improvement that the ODC is doing to exercise its easement. But if the city wanted to add something within its rights and uses within that easement, the city would be able to do that to its, its satisfaction.
So example, a tree fell over the trail, impeding the, the trail users. Would that be the city's responsibility to clear or would that be the ODC's?
I love, I love that example. If we have trail that's in, that's something the ODC has put in for our mission, we would want to keep that trail open. If it is something that the city has later added that, you know, it was your choice and a tree falls on that thing, it would be your responsibility as the city. If that, that is my non-legal perspective of what this document says.
Okay, so what I'm trying to establish, to make sure I understand where the responsibilities of the city and its taxpayers start and stop in terms of the actual use of the property, not use, but the maintenance of the property. Because that's questions I've been asked is, okay, what is the city actually going to be responsible for? And it sounds like it is going to be fairly limited. So long as it falls within the, what's, what's where used, the, the mission of the ODC in terms of its?
Yeah, so there's the enumerated conservation activities. So part of the funding that the city's already allocated would go to constructing, you know, overlook or improving trail. And if that falls within the conservation easement, we've not gone through the permissions with that local jurisdiction, the township, yet to get the final map of what that would be drawn. If those are inside that, we would, we would keep that up. But if at a later date, the city wanted to put in another overlook or a different type of trail or a recreation facility within that easement that's still compatible with the easement, the line would be, that would be a, that would be a choice the future council would make for its taxpayers to maintain that. But if ODC is doing something in accordance with those enumerated conservation activities within that easement area, it's on us to maintain or to remove.
Okay, thank you. Another kind of hypothetical is that let's, let's assume that this just gets wildly popular with running events and, and walk, et cetera. Would the ODC or the city ever be in a position to say, well, maybe we charge to use the property to basically cover the cost of maintaining the property for people, for the, for the public's use? It's not something the city's established, but would that ever be a scenario where we'd say there's a, you know, I don't know, a $3 admission fee to use the trails or, you know, kind of what the state parks do?
Yeah, so we, we ODC have agreed to provide access that the city deems, that the city would choose. So there could be a limiting factor that the city would want to put in. The only other limitation that we've requested is, for example, to, to provide direction for residents on how they're accessing that property. So for example, we mentioned the, the steep banks that are in that area. And we'd want to direct folks to a designated path or steps and be able to keep folks off a bank to prevent erosion. That's the only chance that we, as the ODC, would have to limit access in that case. The rest would be in your, your purview.
Okay, so there's nothing in this agreement that, that would prevent, and not to say that ODC is talking about this or the city is, but let's say there was a use fee that were, that was proposed. Is there anything in this agreement that would stop the city from, or that would say, city would say, no, ODC, you can't do that? Or, and again, this is a hypothetical, so it's not even been suggested. I'm just kind of thinking through some of the scenarios we might see.
My understanding is we're not asking for property access rights in this easement. We're accessing, we're, we're requesting the ability to limit what uses of the property are. So in terms of the property rights we're looking for, we're not dictating access. And it wouldn't be in our ability to do so.
Okay, thank you, Dave. I appreciate answering those questions. The last one I have is in the packet. Bullet point six, following that work, the ODC provided a proposal to, and the first four bullet points, develop trails and signage, create a trailhead, create a parking area, combat invasives, then restore habitat. Bullet five, potentially place a conservation easement over a portion of the property. Is that, is now becoming into view in terms of what that's going to mean in terms of coverage, about 44 acres, I believe? That's being outlined on the map. The word potentially, are we in a position where if we were to decide as a council that we did not want to put a conservation easement in, the potentially causes me some confusion. Is this a yes or a no? Is there?
Well, certainly, the, you know, the, the proposal that we have with ODC was to prepare this conservation easement and there's dollars being spent on it, but the ultimate decision does lie with you. It's your property.
Okay, so there's not been a, the council will still need to take a vote on a conservation easement proposal?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
The only other question I had, unless anybody else wants to go before me. If, if there are new invasive species that come up over your, you identify them, will you then come to the city and say, hey, we need extra dollars to do this? Or is that part of, when, when we look and it says invasive species is part of the agreement that we have with you, will you cover the cost of having those removed or how does that work?
Yeah, so the invasive species that we've covered, there were dollars from that donor that will cover kind of the initial work, some of what the school was out there, some of the woody invasives. But ongoing, we did not make a request to the city for some sort of fund to handle that in perpetuity. The ODC is good at fundraising. We love securing grants and resources. We worked with local municipalities to address invasives. You know, we've worked on doing surveys and things for Hemlock, Willy, Adeljed, you know, and some of our parks here. We would want to have that conversation and it may be something we have funding for, but it might not. So my, my request is just not knowing. You know, for example, if you work with land conservancy, they request a certain size donation to cover all future possible needs, and we have not requested that. If that's, if that's a more preferable arrangement, my boss would love if I asked you for an endowment to permanently take care of that as well, so.
Right, but you will help with, you know, at least reporting to us if you're seeing new things coming up that need to be addressed and?
And we'd, we'd love to be part of the conversations around future uses on the other parts of the property, within that property. We've drawn this agreement to give lots of flexibility in terms of what those conservation activities are so that they can enable the, you know, the running, the trails, the, all those different things that we'd want to have.
Yes, my understanding of this is just no different than how we've got it now at Mount Bald Head or anywhere else, that if we, we know that we've got invasives or whatever, and then we take a vote on, do we want to spend $30,000 to go and treat that or whatever? So this looks like no different than we're doing it at our other conserve properties. I don't have an issue with any of that.
Anything that we haven't?
Yes, just want to just try to just kind of make sure we have some, you know, clear direction from council from here as we, you know, finish up language. And I just want to make sure, if it's all right, Madam Mayor, that we give the city's legal counsel this an opportunity just to kind of touch on, you know, you know, from at least the legal perspective, the, the red lines, why are they there? And then based on what, you know, our, our city attorney has heard today, what, what he sees as some possible options that, that you could consider going forward.
So Chris, if you want to take it from here?
Yes, I think in our sort of red lines, what we wanted to address, we, we addressed a couple of things based on comments from council the last time and confirmed sort of really the scope of the relationship. One particularly, just ensuring that those activities that the city wants to support and continue to have happen can happen so long as they're not in conflict with the conservation easement. So there were some red lines put in place to particularly address that. That would include, well, I just think sort of broadly in this area, we consider passive recreational activities, if that's running trails, et cetera. So I think we've clearly indicated now in the easement, you, the city, aren't limited from promoting that, building those and having those. And really, it would be the only, you know, the worst-case scenario is an intersection where ODC says, well, to preserve conservation goals in this area of the property, or I think examples that were even provided to you previously, erosion, et cetera, you know, there'd be conversations to have related to the easement there to ensure that any trail use, building, current active sort of even passive recreational activities weren't further sort of eroding the ecological and the restorative efforts that might be occurring at the property. The two other sort of pieces that we put in place is, you know, early on, we had a conversation about the length of the easement. It's proposed as a perpetual easement. I know this was addressed with council before. And generally speaking, my understanding from the position of ODC is that they are maybe reluctant to consider an easement that's less than perpetual. So that puts sort of council in a position, from my perspective, to just ensure that as this easement goes into place, we've maybe got sufficient controls for future generations to make sure that we ensure that the, that the conservation activities are fulfilled or that, you know, this, this council's accomplishing the goals that it desires. So we put two pieces in there. One, with respect to the perpetual nature, we put a notice and sort of a standard default provision just to ensure that, look, if for any reason we thought the general conservation activities and goals of ODC were inconsistent with what we thought the easement required, we tried to address ODC's. We knew sort of their initial concerns would be, look, you shouldn't be able to terminate the easement. And so we tried to address those with some type of notice and cure period. 90 days is just sort of something that's used to the extent in a standard contract where they could provide a response as to what their plan is to cure. So I mean, there's room as it relates to the language we propose to work through with them, if that's desirable for council. But ultimately, it was there to just ensure, and I don't think this is something that arises from our perspective in these easements in five years. These are things that I see happen after these easements are in place in 15 years, 20 years, where we're thinking about what this property looks like and potentially maybe there's sufficient erosion or concerns that in 20 years relates to a situation of somebody's coming to then council, then city attorney, saying, hey, how do we make sure that these conservation activities are being fulfilled? So that was put in there as sort of like one of those metrics, that if this is going to be a perpetual easement, city's got some ability to sort of, and I, and I understand and acknowledge that ODC is representative and the good faith conversations that are occurring. This is just sort of putting something in writing to provide a check on that, that relationship. I can appreciate their concern related to our ability to use that 90-day notice and cure period to terminate the easement, but that's not really the design. The design is just to ensure that what this council is sitting here today attempting to do in assessing this easement, that we just know that in 15, 20, 30 years, it's being, it's being fulfilled. And then I think the only other edit that we had, which, which maybe is a, there's been some clarity provided this afternoon and it might be a misperception from our office's perspective. When we look at a lot of these easements, and I think it was answered as it relates to really the donation that might come with an easement of the style, a lot of land conservancies, when we think about them putting the easement in place, one of the benefits that you certainly get is the restriction on development rights, right? So you are knowing that there's a, there is a perpetual limitation as it remains, remains to preserving the natural resource. But then a second component piece is if you have a land conservancy assisting in this process, you know that there are potentially restorative or there are, there's other sort of monitoring that would be occurring related to the long-term sort of status of this property, right? I mean, we assume and that if you enter into this easement, ODC never enters this property again for 99 years or 100 or whatever it is, right? And so it was an attempt to sort of try to put some language in the easement to assume that ED, that ODC would not only be accomplishing the conservation activities that are permitted in the easement, but that also, you know, there was some type of, of plus something more than just preservation that was being accomplished at that site. And it was drafted particularly, I think, after the last comments that were provided, you know, hypothetical of erosion. Okay, well, if there's erosion occurring, the, the representative, the comment was, we, we may want to restrict public access in that area. To me, that's an affirmative act of doing something. That would, to me, mean that there are representatives that are going to the property, they're monitoring this. There was also an identification of certain unique stands of trees and geographic areas all within just this small portion of the property. We would assume then that somebody's at least letting us know if that were to be deteriorating or there were actions that needed to be taken to make further restorative effects so that future generations even could explore, you know, some greater benefit from this property that at least we knew of that, that council was aware that there were some efforts being taken. So that's why that was put in there. I understand that the pushback is sort of concerns about what kind of financial obligation that that vests on ODC long-term. But those are kind of the, the big red lines that we put in place. And then as far as sort of the conservation easement itself, I think that just goes to, you know, what is, you know, city council's goals and what they're trying to accomplish. So happy to sort of take any questions or clarify that.
I'd be curious to know where the 90-day, thanks, Chris, for the presentation. I'd be curious to know where the 90-day cure period comes from as opposed to saying, like, if what we're trying to do is make sure that, you know, we're looking at five, 10, 15, 30 years, whatever, why a 90-day period, not a one-year period? Or, you know, so where's that 90 days coming from?
Yeah, given the sort of lack of compensation for this type of easement and the consideration of Yeah, given the sort of lack of compensation for this type of easement and the consideration of, we're ultimately sort of providing a perpetual conservation easement, the ninety days is coming from, look, if you want this sort of obligation, we would like at least some response to cure within three months. Um, there's certainly room to be worked out as to, we understand that not an actual cure may be committed within ninety days, but I think if we were to notice there's an issue, right, particularly soil erosion, um, what if it bring, you sort of indicate that there's some type of widespread insect causing additional is, it, you know, I think waiting twelve months potentially could cause further effects than maybe immediately addressing it, so it's really related to the plan to cure as opposed to maybe an actual cure, that's where the ninety days come from. And, I mean, largely it's just ninety days, that's, that's three months, that's enough sort of time to have at least fashioned, we would be able to confirm that written correspondence was eve of the notice, that they've had an opportunity to meet about it, and that at least we could have some type of consensus before any type of deadline was triggered that would suggest further action by the city, meaning that you could ultimately move to try to pursue specific performance of the easement.
And it wouldn't mean, so it would mean that they would have to answer to our, so let's just use the, the, uh, erosion issue, so if we see like, okay, there's significant erosion, we want that addressed, um, it doesn't look like you guys are addressing it, and they might come back within the ninety days that, that we bring it up and say, hey, it, we're happy to participate in it, but it's an expensive item and we're going to need whatever, so we can, that can allow for that sort of negotiation to go back and forth, it doesn't mean that O D C is on the hook for addressing whatever we see as a problem, we as a city could be looking at an issue that we have on our own property, even if it isn't the easement contained by O D C and say, hey, we're willing to come forward with these monies to address that issue, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
So, I mean, I think a slight nuance to that, the, the ninety days particularly, yes, as to your procedural framework, I agree, substantively however though, if we were asked to look at the easement and we believe that there is an issue occurring like the erosion for which is the city's responsibility, uh, we would never trigger the ninety day period, because it wouldn't be our position that they would be obligated to cure that, so to be clear, in that type of situation, we'd probably be communicating with council saying, look, we've been provided notice that you have a situation on the property, uh, and it, it would probably be your choice, similar to the contract that you have with O D C, you may then decide totally separate from the ninety day cure period, because we're not suggesting that they're violating the easement, that you would pay them to potentially perform that activity for you. I think our situation is one where, um, we, for instance, let's say that they believe that they can restrict access to the property related to mitigate particular soil erosion, so they've got that provision in the easement, they restrict access to a large portion of the property for which includes trails for passive recreational access, and that goes on for three years, and nothing seems to be done to actually restore the condition and remove the limitation on public access, then city council might say, look, that doesn't seem consistent with the sort of restorative aspects, we think you're overusing your ability to limit access to the property for purposes of your conservation goals, we give them notice, and in ninety days, we would expect them to respond and say, understood, here's what's going on, um, here's how we can sort of correct this to not limit access, et cetera, that maybe is a better example of how it would work.
Well, it seems like our goals are aligned though, so I don't, yeah. I don't see why, one, I mean, I don't think that there's anything that the O D C is going to do that's going to want them to limit us from trying to help with an erosion problem if we see one or limiting access, I don't see that as, that's actually like, what they want is for people to be on the trails, so is there pushback on the ninety days then, from?
On that provision, because it, it does provide, like, as council shared, it provides an out where it's not really a perpetual conservation easement, so we would have a hard time wanting to invest any resources.
So your concern would be that a different council would want to do something that was not in line with the goals of the O D C?
Or would use something that's outside of our control, right, if council continues to use the southwest portion for, um, leaf drop, and that brings in invasive species that we can't control, and then you're asking us to cure something that you know, there's, there's no way to prove which invasive, how it got there, um, it provides a pretty big loophole in that manner, and one of the other red lines, um, that council put in was to change the word shall enforce to may, um, so it lets the city, which we agreed to, but it lets the city choose not to protect our easement, um, and leave that to us, and so it's really hard for O D C, in fact, we would not, uh, go forward with the easement with a ninety day cure process when we, we can't even guarantee that you folks will help us protect it.
I understand. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Stan, um, this, I'm not sure this is a question for Dave or for Chris or for the city manager, but, um, so forty-four to forty-five acres of this property with the conservation easement, if it goes through, will essentially be locked down in perpetuity from any other, except, except for the specified uses that limits that, so the other hundred and thirty odd acres, let's say the future, as a stakeholders, let's say that we decide, the city decides to sell that other part of the property to development, I, whatever. Um, we're still allowed to have that latitude to, or future councils are allowed to have that latitude to determine what to do with the property that's not in the conservation easement, correct? We're not limited to what we choose to do that, now this past conversation though brings up some questions in my mind, because if you put in a, I don't know, something that, that would create some issues for the conservation easement, the city may be in a position of having to cure that, essentially.
Can Chris answer, could Chris answer that for us?
Does that, does that question make sense, Chris?
Yes, absolutely does, uh, Councilman Gardner, so, uh, answer as to the rest of the acreage that's outside of the easement, no, it's not restricted by the easement, there's no language in the easement, um, that would imply that what we conduct adjacent there too would be a problem. I do agree with you though, for instance, taking the example that was provided, if you, if you were to drop off leaves in the adjacent parcel and that were to cause, you know, actions on the conserved area, there'd be a question of what um, impact that has, although I don't think the easement is drafted in a way where O D C is required to mitigate the invasive species from leaf drop off or other issues anyways, I don't want to overstate that, I don't think that's how you would even be able to use the ninety day, uh, cure issue, and then also the ninety day cure period, it's actually, it's, it's meant to be a little bit of a reciprocal provision, because O D C actually has its own provision in the easement related to its ability to terminate. In early conversations, we were looking for, uh, provision that actually was, uh, had some similar reciprocity, and that was sort of rejected based on kind of similar comments that were made this afternoon about, look, we're not interested in investing resources in this property if we don't know that it's going to be perpetual, so we sort of got rid of the request for a reciprocal termination provision that they have, and instead went to the ninety day period, but the ninety day period only applies for purposes of the city saying that O D C has some obligation or the easement, understand though that there really are very limited, if any obligations, under the easement for which you would even trigger that provision, okay, so, uh, and then just the third thing, on the, um, changing the provision of May on the city side, that was really, what, what it said was, uh, O D C's easement, if any other person's challenge or violate the easement, the city shall then enforce it, and it, it's just kind of an expenditure problem, we end up adopting an easement today for which we really need to, I don't think we're saying, and I know this from working with council, that if the right situation presented itself, council wouldn't have the full faith backing to take appropriate action, we just have to be very careful in sort of binding future obligations, particularly appropriations and expenditures, that's the only reason that that was changed to May. Um, certainly, O D C has the ability under the easement to make the request, and the city's got to work in good faith as to whether it would or would not take some type of enforcement action against somebody else violating the easement. Understand that somebody else violating the easement, you, the city still underlie, you still own the underlying property, so they're also going to be committing a potentially a trespass or other sort of injuries to the city, you probably have a vested interest to do something. Uh, we just made the change to sort of be particularly conservative in what your future obligations will be as this sort of carries out.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh, you know, i- is there a piece, an interim piece in here, and I can't find it in the document that would handle, you know, basically dispute resolution, you know, prior to the need to go into, you know, you know, this more strict interpretation of like, we're going to terminate unless you come up with a solution in ninety days, because I do see, if we take the erosion example, let's say, you know, twenty years from now, the city next to the ravine builds a community center, and then twenty years afterwards, the erosion starts impacting the community center, yeah, you know, but perhaps the board has changed, and like, well, no, we can't afford to help you, or we can't work with you, you're going to have to just like tear down your community center, you know, that kind of thing, is, is is there a way to make this work for everybody by kind of couching this more in language of dispute resolution, and what dispute resolution process would look like? And I'll just put that out there for council or
Chris.
For anyone to address, because it, this, this seems like it goes immediately to termination without, you know, so I don't think the intention is to say, oh, we want it back, it's just like, you know, we've got a big problem, and we just like, you don't know what the next council would do, we don't know what the next board of O D C might do in terms of like, we ran out of money, we can't help you guys, you know, we can't have it back though either, to fix, to fix your problem.
I would, I would say in our request, um, uh, one, Mr. Mr. Patterson, I appreciate, yeah, you know, the, the way you're looking out for the city's interests and just know, I'm speaking as a layperson here, so I'm not trying to debate finer points of law, I, I, I think what this highlights is what the O D C is trying to protect against, is that we're, we are, we do not have the force of being a public municipality, and we will not have the resources to defend this easement legally against the city that does. Um, and so we are asking for you to put extra trust in us as a nonprofit to do that conservation work, um, in that particular example regarding the eas, the, the, the way the property is laid out, the way the erosion would go would only jeopardize the watershed, just, the water's going to go down into the watershed, so it would jeopardize what's in our easement. Um, I, that, you know, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is we are asking for this to be an agreement that is more favored towards our organization than what council is conservatively proposing to you, um, at this point in time, that is how we believe we can best protect the property in the long run. Yeah, I guess, so that is what we're asking, I guess we're not trying to uh, say that it's a completely even Stevens, we are, we are trying to have some way of ensuring the long-term conservation of that site.
It may be good to, yeah, I mean, see it, Chris, if you, uh, want to comment on that, that this, this council member Dean's, uh, dispute resolution, maybe alternative versus?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, um, so, you know, we threw the provision out there for conversation with the O D C to figure out an alternative, I think we were interested in negotiating and discussing that, that sort of language, we weren't, nobody threw it out there as the only solution. Um, we put it out there with the objective to really sort of communicate that I think, you know, there needs to be, you have a ninety day only out for the, for the O D C, and then there's no other language related to what the city has as obligations under the easement, so I, I don't have any opposition to, uh, Councilman Dean's proposal. It's a fair depo, it's, it's a fair proposal, we can definitely prepare language related to a dispute resolution mechanism.
Um, I would just say I have no questions at this point, just that this is a great conversation, I'm so glad we're having this, I think we need to continue to ask questions, this is a very complex situation, no disrespect against any parties involved, but these are the kinds of things that we want to enter into with a lot of advanced thought, alternatives discussed, questions answered and asked, today's the start of that, um, I think there's a lot here to just still be understood in terms of what the responsibilities are going to be, the dispute resolution from Councilmember Dean, I think it's a good idea to figure out how we can do that. Though we would never hopefully get to that point, it's a good relief valve to have for a situation that might occur, I think, uh, again, I just appreciate the opening conversation today, this is the first real conversation we've had about what this is going to mean for the city.
Is there anything that would stop, uh, O D C from doing the other work, I mean, we've got that conservation easement, obviously it's just one piece of it, O D C is still, and while we, while we hammer out the redlining of the contract for the easement.
Certainly.
All the rest of the work is still a go, and, okay, all right. I mean, I, obviously we still have more work to, I think that, yeah, we should look into, um, coming to a place that, you know, both, uh, our outside legal counsel in O D C is comfortable with the language, and we hire outside counsel for a reason, and, uh, um, we want to take their advice and, um, but we, I, I want to make sure that we're doing a good partnership with the O D C.
Yeah, just, and just to be clear, I'm, I'm very much in favor of making this happen, I, I just, and I, and I really respect your view that there's things that, that you just don't know as a board, there's once again, things that we just don't know as, as, as a city, um, you know, right now.
Councils, yeah.
As, you know, as a city in this time, and, you know, for example, you know, we are going to have to go after invasive deer in a way that may not be consistent with everyone's view, viewpoint on, on that, and, you know, just imagine a situation where we had invasives taking over like, you know, some, an important city asset that, that was in the non-conservation asset, and, you know, there, there was a difference of opinion on your board of like, no, no, you can't go down there and, let's say, manage a deer herd or something, you know, it's, it's, I really want this to happen, I really do, and I, I hope we can work it out, I, I think it's just finding ways to protect both parties from the unknown. I, I think there's, I think we can get a little bit closer to protections for both, and I understand your point though as well.
Yeah, I, I would be, what I would be requesting would be if we can have our legal counsel work directly with the cities to hammer out that last provision.
I'd be comfortable with that.
So would I, yep. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
So much, appreciate it.
You.
Okay. Uh, anything else that anybody wants to discuss on that, or any questions that haven't been answered? Okay, uh, okay, we'll go on to public comment then, on, uh, whatever you'd like to talk about, so if anybody in the audience wishes to speak.
Mark Flungold, seven forty-seven Water Street. Um, I, I want to stay on the same topic, because I've been trying to understand this for almost a year. This, in, in the community really doesn't understand it, even though it's great to have trails, everybody says, yes, that's wonderful to have. But my perception is here is, and, and that's what I'm trying to do, is get the, the understanding of how this, what this is. The city owns property here worth several million dollars. And that's basically in trust of this group. And we get, receive an endowment for somewhere around a hundred and thirty or a hundred and sixty thousand. And then we would like to apply that to this property we own, so we bring in the C D C, or the O D C to put in trails and so on, and they get that hundred and twenty or a hundred and sixty thousand to do that. Am I even close to understanding, because I have talked to more people and nobody really knows what's happening here? I mean, yes, we're trying to get trails, yes, we're trying to get an understanding of what it is, but there's money that was given, there's property that's worth several million dollars that the city owns, and we have the outside discovery center who is trying to put in trails, I think, and do a conservation work. We're trying to understand that as a public. What is really happening here, that's the thing that you're not communicating to the public, and maybe I'm way off base, that I don't understand it, but that, that property has value to this community. And the red lines I read, after reading and studying the, um, easement, the only the red lines make that easement acceptable, those red lines where they put in something for a way out for the city in case something doesn't go right. So I'm trying to understand what's going on here totally to this whole project, so, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else? All right, anyone online wish to speak? Do you see any hands raised, Jamie?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, uh, I, there's no correspondence, so we will go on to council comments, uh, Joe.
Well, again, thank you for, um, making me feel at home and be part of the council, I want to throw a special thank you to, uh, the city staff, Ryan and Jamie, they've, um, given me a lot of information to digest, so I've been kind of diving into that, and, um, Ryan spent some time with me today, so, very helpful. And, um, I think the city and all of us are really lucky to have, you know, such great talent and dedicated talent, um, serving us, so, um, and I appreciate your patience while I try and come up to speed and get my feet under me, uh, so to speak, so, thank you.
Um, I'll leave the rotary piece to you, Mayor.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Right.
Nothing today, thank you.
Uh, welcome, Joe, um, I, some of you I told before the meeting went to the, um, the school board's interview of Mark Niedlinger for, um, superintendent last night, and it was just was such a well-done meeting, was great interview process, um, the board deliberations were really best in class in terms of listening and and offering thoughtful feedback to each other, so, um, they, they agreed to, um, enter contract negotiations to hire him as superintendent, so, it's great.
Fantastic. Uh, yeah, so we, uh, attended the Rotary Club meeting today, where they, um, presented the city of Sagertuck with a check for ten thousand dollars to go towards, uh, the treatment of the invasive. Go towards the treatment of the invasive mill foil in our harbor. So, you know, that money is raised through Venetian Festival and part of their goal. Through the Venetian Festival is to raise money for environmental causes and to help our harbor. And it just went hand in hand with that. So it was fantastic to receive those funds. And of course. By us buying tickets to go there and the businesses in our community donating to that, we all contributed to that ten thousand dollars that will go towards the city. So it was just fantastic news to receive that check today. And then also they made an announcement about the Corks and Forks event that will be at the Ivy House on December fifth. You can get tickets for that. It's gonna benefit the Boys and Girls Club. So there's definitely a need in our community. They talked about. The Boys and Girls Club in the Sagatuck Douglas area is a very well attended. Club. It's one of the highest ranking like as far as participation compared to the amount of kids that we have in our school district. There's a lot of kids in our school district that taste, take advantage of the Boys and Girls Club. So the fact that it's happening here in town, so it's happening at the Ivy House and it'll raise money for. The Boys and Girls Club in the greater Holland area, but we benefit from that because we're a part of that. So. At this point, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes. Everybody.